We're going to call a meeting to order, April 22nd, 2019. The hearing tonight is CUP 1901 and SP 1901, Evening Star Manufactured Home Park. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll remind you one more time, if any of you wishes to speak, we need you to sign in that we're here. A roll call, we've got one commissioner, Ryan missing tonight. Introduction to opening public hearing. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing regarding the Evening Star Manufactured Home Park Conditional Use Permit 1901 and Site Plan 1901. The meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosure will be read, staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant, then anyone else who wishes to address the issue will be given an opportunity. The members of the public will have three minutes each for testimony. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal. Any members of the audience that wish to speak must sign in in order to testify. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant's staff or anyone else who testifies. I now call the public hearing, and we'll have Jake read our disclosure statement.
All persons testifying will be deemed part of the application and must provide their full name and mailing address. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue, in person or in writing, with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicants an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals, or to seek damages in Circuit Court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body will grant...the hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing or continuance to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you.
Chair, may I add a few comments to that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Now, he went through there and explained that we have certain criteria that the project has to match. And what we've done for you tonight is we've taken the criteria from our code and put them here on the wall as large as we could get them, so you folks could see those as well. When you're presenting testimony tonight to our planning commission, if you want that testimony to be as useful as possible to our planning commissioners, you should couch it in terms of these criteria. To come up and say that this project might affect your property values won't have much bearing on our planning commission, because it's not one of the criteria that they're allowed to consider. So anytime you're making statements, you should try to make sure you're making it clear to our planning commission which one of the criteria your comments apply towards. Thank you.
Does any members of the commission wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? I hear no comments. Do any members of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts?
Site visit.
So noted.
I'm driven by.
Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? I hear no comments. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosure of any member of the commission? I hear no comments. So we'll go to staff report. Mr. Straight, would you read the staff report, please?
Happy to. Thank you, Chair, fellow commissioners. Matt Straight presenting tonight for staff. The project is located south of Millersburg Drive and easterly of Sedona Road. The zoning on the site is rural residential 10-acre minimum urban conversion. The applicant is proposing tonight a manufactured home project that will feature 28 spaces, one park site, one basin, one basin area, I should say. No onsite office at all is proposed as part of this project. There are no structures proposed as part of this project shy of the units that he can put on, but there's no office, no laundry room, anything like that. There is one entrance to the project, as proposed off of Millersburg Drive. The existing home on the project is not a part of the project, as you can see here. The project's going to kind of wrap around that existing home. And lastly, I wanted to spend a few moments on this. The applicant is proposing that this be an age-restricted community. We wanted to make it very clear to everybody in the audience and to our planning commission tonight, that while the applicant is stating that it's going to be age-restricted, we as the city can't require it to be age-restricted. So even though the applicant is saying it's an age-restricted project, we could very well approve it, and then before he builds it, they can change their mind, and there's really nothing the city could do about it. So any mitigation that might be addressed by the applicant stating that it's age-restricted, maybe he thinks age-restricted communities are quieter, maybe he's going to say that they have less traffic. We can't really take that into account, because we can't hold that against the applicant to remain age-restricted. So just wanted to spend a few moments on that. This slide shows the typical elevations and site plans for the project. The project is proposing a conditional use permit and site plan review tonight. The conditional use permit is for the use, the site plan review is for the actual design of the project. The criteria for a site plan and for a conditional use permit in our code are identical, so we're only going to go through the code once. The criteria you see appear are the same for either one of those cases. The project tonight must satisfy each and every one of these criteria in order to be approved by the planning commission tonight. Now, I wanted to cover this as well. Criteria A that we're about to go over requires the project to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So what that really does is it links the comprehensive plan with the criteria that you see here on the wall. If there's some aspect of the comprehensive plan that they're not meeting, that is linked to the criteria through Criteria A, which we'll talk about in more detail in just a moment. Similarly, Criteria B does the exact same thing with our code, which means all the standards that are contained in the code. So the standards, if they're not met, are linked to the criteria through Criteria B. And again, we'll talk about that in more detail here in a moment. So let's go ahead and walk through the highlights of all the criteria from our code. As I explained before, the first criteria is for the applicant to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on staff's review of the project, the project conforms, though there are two areas where more discretion is required, and that's certainly something that the planning commission is going to have to address here tonight. Specifically, Chapter 9.4 in our Housing Policy Number One states that the city recognizes the need for an adequate supply of sound, decent, and attractive housing, which includes a variety of types and designs which are responsive to community needs. Now specifically, this policy speaks specifically to the areas responding to the community needs. The comp plan isn't specific as to whether that means the new families that are moving in as a result of this project, or the surrounding people who surround this site. So because it could go either way, that's really somewhere where the planning commission is going to want to weigh in with more discretion. Second, Policy Eight states, in the same housing section, states that residential areas shall be protected from excessive through traffic, conflicting land uses, or other encroachments that would impair a safe, quiet living environment. Now again, some of this is very clear. In the staff report, we explain that we think that through traffic won't be a concern, and that the project should be safely designed, for several different reasons that we state in the staff report. However, when it comes to conflicting uses, or whether or not the noise is going to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors, that's something that's going to take a little bit more discretion for the planning commission to weigh in on. So in essence, in summary, the project could conform to the comprehensive plan, however, some parts are a bit more subjective, and so that's where you're going to want to weigh in as a planning commission tonight. The second criteria requires the project to conform to the code. Now, I wanted to clarify, the state has a section of code, Chapter 10, of the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Park Specialty Code. That specifically applies to manufactured home parks and how they're to be set up. This criteria isn't speaking to that. Rather, this criteria is speaking to the standards that are in Millersburg Land Development Code. And you can see those here on the screen, and we're going to go over those throughout the course of our presentation here tonight. But in summary, staff feels that all of these standards can be met with the conditions of approval that we've applied to the project. So next, I want to talk about the criteria that requires traffic safety, and the fact that the project can't impact traffic safety in any way. So I'm going to go through these criteria in three different parts. First, we'll talk about the access, then we're going to talk about the internal circulation for the project, and then we're going to talk about the pedestrian circulation. So first, let's dive into the access. This slide shows the entirety of the site, as you can see in context. Here, we've taken the actual project and superimposed it on the site, and you can see that there is a single point of access into this project from Millersburg Drive. It's essentially acting as a cul-de-sac. Now, here's a blow-up of that same area, and you can see the project site is in red on the slide. This is Sedona Road here, and Millersburg Road is towards the top, of course. This is the access point proposed by the applicant. The city has a master system transportation plan, or transportation system plan that is, or TSP, and that document controls how we do transportation requirements in the city. The transportation system plan requires that at least 600 feet be between intersections within the city of Millersburg. It then goes on to say that there needs to be at least 300 feet between driveways if it's on an arterial. Now, Millersburg Drive is an arterial, so this project, as it's designed, doesn't appear to conform to either one of those requirements, because the distance between the applicant's entrance and the nearest road, which is Sedona Road, is only 165 feet. Now, having that said, Section 5.122 explains that substandard access is allowed, if there's no other way for the applicant to get reasonable access. Now, in this case, the project is generally surrounded by homes on two sides, and on the other side, they're surrounded by Crooks Creek. So reasonable access is something the planning commission is going to have to address, but staff felt that reasonable access couldn't be gained any other way, and so the intersection spacing isn't as much of a concern for staff. Additionally, our code goes on to explain that if you can't meet the intersection spacing, then you have to submit a traffic study. Now, our code didn't elaborate on what exactly that traffic study needed to prove, but in this case, the traffic study did come in and illustrate that the project will be safe, and it didn't require any mitigation in order to meet the safety standards, so we didn't pull out any requirements and add them as conditions of approval. Additionally, FIRE has commented indicating that up to 30 units can come from a single point of access before they have concerns and require a second point of access. So in summary, staff feels that this project can meet the access spacing requirements. Further, the existing driveway that is there today on the slide you can see here for the existing home is going to be moved as part of this project. That's what the driveway looks like today, and they're shifting the driveway to come in off of the applicant's entry, which is going to leave just the same intersection driveway that they have today, just one on the site. It will remain one, so you won't see multiples right next to each other. So in summary, we feel that the project meets the access requirement as designed. But that was only part of the traffic safety aspect. Now, we're going to switch gears and talk about the internal circulation for the project. The applicant submitted the proposal with internal streets that were 20 feet wide. It seems the applicant has designed these streets using Table 10C from the Oregon State Requirements, which we included in the staff report. This design does not permit parking on either side of the street, so the applicant is proposing for no parking internal to the project, except for the guest spaces that they've included as part of their design. Now, the City of Albany and...or sorry, the City of Albany Fire Department and the City of Millersburg have serious concerns with the design being 20 feet wide and allowing no parking on the streets. People tend to parallel park on these streets, even if no parking is allowed, and so this creates a public health and safety risk, because emergency vehicles can't get through there if cars are illegally parked, on the...parallel parked on the sides of those internal streets. As such, we've added a condition of approval to the project that will require parking on at least one side of the street. And lastly, it's important to note that the police department can't enforce no parking internal to the project if they're private streets, which is another one of the reasons why we feel we have to add parking on one side to assure that that doesn't become a The Millersburg City Code says that where the state manufactured park rules are very specific, that they trump over our rules. That's in the state's code, and it's in our code. However, we feel that the state's rules are ambiguous when it comes to whether or not the street standards can be regulated by the local jurisdiction, and we feel that where there is ambiguity, that we are allowed to step in and have our standards be enforced. And our transportation system plan requires internal streets to be designed the same way...or private streets, rather, to be designed the same way you would design public streets, and that comes right out of our code. And so our public street width from our transportation system plan is 32 feet from curb to curb if you allow parking on one side, as you can see here on the slide. So our proposed condition of approval reflects this, and requires the applicant to increase the size of the streets to accommodate on-street parking. The third issue that we're going to talk about regarding traffic safety is pedestrian circulation. The application proposes one sidewalk on one side of the street that is four feet wide, and it is curb-adjacent, so it's right on the curb with no landscaping at all. Our transportation system plan requires sidewalks on both sides of the street and four-foot landscape buffers between the sidewalk and the street. Again, this adds to the safety, and we felt that that was critical, given the design of the project and the amount of curves that are within the project. It makes it more difficult for a driver to see people down the road, and so we felt that sidewalks on both sides of the street were appropriate to assure that it matches our code. So we've added a condition of approval that would require five-foot sidewalks on both sides, four-foot planter strips on both sides, for a total internal street width of 50 feet. That's the same standard we would require for a single-family project anywhere in the city. So moving on from traffic, the next criteria requires all the signage and lighting to have no negative impacts on the surrounding community. Now, the applicant is not proposing any signage at this time, so that criteria doesn't apply to the signage. The project is proposing nine different street lights, as shown here on the slide. No details were provided by the applicant regarding how those were to be shielded, and how that shielding might impact the neighbors on the project site. So we've required that a more detailed street plan be submitted that shows how they're proposing to shield those lights, just to assure that they won't have any negative impacts on the surrounding community. That's been added as a condition of approval. Now, adequate utilities do exist at the site within Millersburg Drive. That's another one of the criteria. The individual city meters, however, we can't run individual city meters to each one of those units. So they're going to have to have one master city meter going into the project site, and then the applicant is welcome to add individual meters that he regulates and he bills, but we can't run individual meters to those homes, because there's just one parcel. The criteria that requires the project to not adversely impact drainage ways was the next one that we wanted to talk about. Now, this slide shows the existing condition. It comes from one of the applicant's exhibits. And here, I've just kind of circled around where they show wetlands exist on the site. Crooks Creek is also shown to the east. Now, this area here in red is where the applicant is proposing to add a detention basin and a treatment basin. Now, these are the low points of the site, so that's a logical place to put the basins. And these areas, you can see here that I've circled in green, these are the areas where the applicant is proposing to eliminate wetlands from the site using mitigation. Now, we've added a condition of approval to the project that requires a full drainage study, and to give us more detail on that. Any additional analysis that will be provided for the wetlands areas is going to have to be run through the state, through the DSL, Department of State Lands, for concurrence with them as well. Now, it should be noted that the applicant's plan that we've conditioned for is going to have to show us exactly how they're going to be addressing the drainage. And this doesn't necessarily apply to the project at this stage, because we've added a condition of approval requiring a hydrology plan, but they're really going to have to do one of three things. They're going to have to assure that the drainage coming off of their property today is matched in the future condition. That's why I'm showing this green arrow really wide. So if it's coming off of the site in a sheet-form condition today, they're going to have to replicate that, because that's following what the historic conditions are. Now, they can concentrate that drainage and have it come out at one funneled point, but if they do that, they're going to have to get an easement from the neighbor, because Crooks Creek next to them is in private property, and that neighbor's going to have to agree to that concentrated flow now coming on their site, because that's going to change the hydrology of the site. If they can't fan it back out to perpetuate the historical condition, and the applicant ...or the neighbor doesn't agree to channelizing it, then they're going to have to find a way to get the drainage back up to Millersburg Drive, which will be uphill, to put it into the city stormwater system. Again, they don't have to show that to us now, and the fact that they didn't show that in the application is acceptable. They're just going to have to show that to us in the future hydraulic analysis to show us how that's going to work. So to summarize, we feel that with the conditions of approval added, we feel that this project can meet the drainage wave requirement standards. So the last criteria that we have deals with hazards. Again, you've seen this in a lot of the projects in the past. We don't anticipate a lot of hazards from a project like this. Essentially, the hazards would match what you would see on a single-family project, which would just pertain to household chemicals, things like that. This section does, however, speak to noise, and it talks about nuisances. We didn't have any evidence in the record from the applicant that would indicate that the noise from their project would be excessive, but this criteria does allow us to link noise to this. Given the fact that this is going to be matching what's required in our code, as far as density is concerned, staff felt that wasn't a concern, and felt that they did meet the criteria. So that wraps up the criteria that you see here on the wall, but I wanted to spend a few moments going through the standards that come out of our code, and how the project meets or doesn't meet those standards. Again, I wanted to highlight that these standards link back to the criteria through Criteria B, which requires them to be consistent with the code. So most of these standards that you see here, we've already addressed, as we talked about the criteria. Specifically, wetlands, we've added conditions for that. The pedestrian bike and sidewalks, we've talked about that. The street plans, we've discussed that as well. Stormwater and exterior lighting all were addressed. The one exception that we didn't really talk about with the criteria, but still applies, is the landscaping requirements that come from Section 5.134. The applicant did provide us some landscape details, but not really enough for us to tell if they met all the requirements from our landscaping section. So we've added a condition of approval to the project, just indicating that they have to bring in a more detailed landscape plan before they build out. That's not unusual. We see that a lot from applicants. They did give us an application-level landscape plan, but we always ask for a little bit more detailed plan, so we can look at that as we move forward. Included in the required standards are the standards from Section 6.165, which are specific to manufactured home parks. So if you go to that section of our code, there's a whole list of standards that they have to meet if they're going to be building a brand-new mobile home park. So in the staff report, we went through each one of those points one at a time, and we're going to run through them right now very quickly. Again, these link to Criteria B, because they're standards from our code. So first, our code says that they have to be Class A or B units only going on there. Now, that pertains to the kind of manufactured home they can put on there, and the applicant's narrative indicated that they were fine with putting Class A or B on the project site. The minimum area for a manufactured home park is four or more units. In this case, they've got 28, so they met that standard. The density for a manufactured home park allows up to seven per acre, and in this case, they have 4.4 acres, and so if you multiply that by the seven, that allows them 30 units. They're only proposing 28, so they're within the standard for that. The access has to be from an arterial. In this case, they've met that requirement. They're allowed to have laundry facilities or offices. They don't have any of those in this project, but that's okay. It's not a requirement, but they're allowed to have those. They do have a recreation site on the project. You can see that in the exhibits. That's also allowed. There is a 20-foot setback requirement. The applicants have shown that all the proposed structures, manufactured homes, will be at least 20 feet from the boundary of the site. The landscaping, and again, we've added a condition of approval to show more detail on the landscaping, and the utilities have to be available for the site. In this case, the utilities are available in Millersburg Drive. However, Section 6.165 also specifically outlines the impacts that the commission can condition, and I wanted to go over this, because it lists certain conditions of approval that could be added. But this shouldn't be construed to mean this is the only places where the planning commission can add conditions of approval. The planning commission can add conditions of approval to address any one of these criteria that are up here on the wall. They don't necessarily have to be limited to these. But those that are listed in here include the fact that the planning commission can require CCNRs on the project. We didn't think that would be necessary in this case, as we outlined in our staff report. The planning commission can limit the class type to A or B or both, up to the planning commission. They can add additional requirements for additional screening, which we're going to talk about in a moment. Staff feels we do need to have some additional screening on the project. Or the planning commission is allowed to ask for increased setbacks. Now again, the planning commission can add these conditions of approval, but they have to do so to mitigate criteria that you see here on the wall. So this section also requires the screening, which we just talked about. Specifically, this is the language from our code that talks about screening. I'm not going to go read all of it in detail, but it does require that the entire perimeter of the site be screened in some method, and here it lists five different ways where you can screen the project site. In this case, the applicant has chosen to use number one. They are planning on screening the site using Leyland Cypress trees, as we discussed in the staff report. And this exhibit shows those trees, and on the left, you can see it in a little bit more detail. It's blown up to show you where they're proposing to add those Leyland Cypress. Now, the screening for this project is difficult, because the homes that are built in the area you see here in red are higher. The grade has shifted, and those homes sit up higher, and they did that originally for the neighboring tract to make sure it drained properly. So they brought that up, and now there are slopes. The slopes are located on the individuals' property, not the applicant's, on the ones next to it. You can see here on this exhibit, on the grading exhibit, you can see the actual slope right here in this area, and then to the south, right along this area. And they're all located on the individual homes on the other side of the project site. So the applicant's trees that they're proposing, you can see here in green, very faintly on the project, but you can see here in an additional exhibit that was provided by the applicant. This is a site plan or section cut of the site, and you can see where they're proposing to build a fence, and then they're proposing to put the Leyland Cypress. And the fact that the homes sit up higher mean that even if those Leyland Cypress grow to eight feet, the homes that are next to it still have a strong chance of seeing over those into the project site. And so if the code's requirement is to screen, if the intent of the code is to screen to allow one neighbor to not see the other neighbor, it can be assumed that the code was talking about that at an even-level grade situation, but now that it's offset, staff feels that it would be appropriate for us to add additional screening. Indeed, the code says that 80% of the view has to be blocked within two years. In this case, if the homes are higher, that won't be achieved. So we feel that it's required to add an additional condition of approval to the project that would require an additional canopy tree to be planted in the backyards of each one of the sites in the applicant's project, in order to provide a larger canopy to help block the views from the neighboring surrounding areas. So with that, I'm ready to make a recommendation, but before I did that, I wanted to hand...I wanted to address the memo. Sorry, I've got one here. We handed out a memo to the planning commission with some additional information. One was a letter that was submitted by a member of the public after the staff report was printed, and we added a staff response there. In addition, we added the line-of-site exhibit that we mentioned. We actually mentioned in the staff report that we didn't have that at the time the staff report went out. Well, we're providing it to you now, and it's part of the record, officially introduced. And then last but not least, we referenced a letter from FIRE, Albany Fire. We referenced that in our staff report, but we neglected to actually attach it to the staff report. That was just an error, and we've now attached that here in the memo, so you can see that letter in its entirety. So with that, staff recommends approval of the application pursuant to the conditions of approval as stated. And before I finish my presentation, I wanted to outline for the public more what's going to happen next, and it was mentioned by our chairman, but I wanted to go over it again. At this point, we're done with our presentation. The planning commission can ask any clarifying questions if they want. We're then going to invite the applicants up, and we're going to hear a presentation from the applicants. After that, we're going to open up the floor to members of the public. Now, we're going to give everybody three minutes each to come up here and give any kind of testimony that you like on the microphone. It's not intended to be a conversation. This is a quasi-judicial hearing and follows a very strict procedure. And so generally speaking, members of the audience don't ask questions of the planning commission. commission. You certainly can, but they're not obligated to answer any questions because we're trying to avoid any kind of conversation starting where we're volleying back and forth or arguing or debating. That's not the intent of a quasi-judicial hearing. After everybody gets their three minutes to speak, both for and against the project, then we're going to have the applicant come up and give a rebuttal. When the applicant gives a rebuttal, if there's any additional things you wanted to add after that, your chance to provide public input has already passed. So no raising of hands saying, wait, 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 now that he said that, I want to say something else. Your three minutes is up. That's what you got. So with that, I'll go back. And Chairman, that completes my application. The applicants are available for their presentation as well.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicants please come forward? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Norman Pickle. My address is 2232 42nd Avenue, Southeast, Number 771, Salem, Oregon 97317.
Thank you.
Mike Reader for the applicant, Law Office of Mike Reader, 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 205 Eugene, Oregon 97401.
Okay. I'd make one request of you gentlemen, that you speak loudly because our P.A. system doesn't get to the back, folks. Thank you. Proceed, please.
This proposal is for a 28-space, 55 or older manufactured home park. And as we noted, that the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling Park Specialty Code, which we call the code from now on, was used by the applicant and the engineer to develop the design for the proposed park. And that is what's under review today. Under the code, Item 10-1.1 states, "This code establishes the minimum and maximum requirements for design and construction of manufactured dwelling parks throughout the state of Oregon to provide uniformity and affordability and to keep construction costs predictable. Except for specifically permitted by this code, no jurisdiction may require a person to exceed the requirements of this code." And I'm going to kind of touch on several points in the staff report individually, but one is that paved driveway requiring parking on both sides results in a minimum 30-foot driveway width using the code on Table 10C. The applicant has proposed a 20-foot, no-parking street, and it also complies with 10C and will not have any parking on either side. This 20-foot paved street will have a four-foot sidewalk, walkway on each side of the street to be separated from the street grade by an extruded curb. In Table 10C of this minimum street pavement width, the street does not allow parking. An additional four spaces will be provided for off-street parking, and it should be noted that each space will be given a carport that can provide for two additional spaces, and if necessary, the applicant can construct additional parking off-site, or excuse me, off the part of the individual lots. We believe staff has mistaken that a 32-foot paved driveway is required, and the condition proposed for additional paved driveway width, as well as sidewalks and planter strips, exceeds those standards of the code and is not permitted by the state code. The proposed development does not have adverse impacts on existing or proposed drainage ways, including flow disruption, flooding, contamination, erosion, drainage ways, and required drainage facility are provided that has capacity to serve the proposed development or use. This is stated in the staff report as an item that needs to be addressed. They propose a condition that any off-site water flowing onto the property will have to be appropriately routed to an approved discharge, approved discharge point without adverse impact to downstream properties. And Matt touched a bit with the design up there. One thing that the applicant wants to know, that the surrounding subdivisions on the south and west side of this development, several of those properties have drainage pipes that lead directly onto this property rather than back into the subdivision as they should have been designed. This is an element that is not believed to be required to be addressed by this applicant. It should be addressed by the city and go back into their own subdivision design. Section 5.122, Sub 3, pedestrian bicycle and 5.124 sidewalks. Staff finding is that the development does not meet this standard. As was noted earlier, the staff is imposing a greater standard than required by the state code, and this is not required or allowed. The 20-foot paved driveway with a four-foot sidewalk is sufficient to support this senior development. This development is for 28 spaces within a 55 or older manufactured dwelling park. The state code under 10-5.4 states the following. Residents may be required to cross a park street in front of their manufactured dwelling lot to get to the sidewalk or walkway on the other side of the street. Also, a sidewalk or walkway shall be required only on one side of each park street. Park streets without sidewalks may be designed with a walkway on one side of the street, and sidewalks and walkways shall be a minimum of four feet in width. It is important to note, the street is not a through street, so any traffic generated will be by the residents and will not be sufficient traffic closed to require greater improvement than what is being proposed. The applicant's proposal will comply with the state code, and the city is not allowed to impose a greater standard. Section 5.123, Streets. Again, staff recommendation is to increase width to that as required by this ordinance standard in addition to what is required by the state code. This is not allowed under 10-1.1 of the code, which states that the local jurisdiction cannot impose standards that are less or greater than what is retired and required by the state code. Section 5.126, Storm Drainage. This is covered a little earlier, and that was about the applicant shall provide a drainage plan. He will be doing that later on, but again, it's a question of should the neighboring properties be required to enclose their storm drainage, jump back onto their own property than draining onto this subject property. Landscaping. This is an area of local ordinance exceeds what's required by state code. Section 10-2.1A states, "Local planning department is given specific authority to establish reasonable criteria for a park is not less than the minimum requirements in this code and not greater than the requirements for single-family uses in the underlying code. These include landscaping, fencing, and buffer zones around the perimeter of the park. The landscaping plan imposed by the city far exceeds that required for a single-family development with the city of Millersburg. The city does not require specific development landscaping plans that involve screenings the development from adjacent properties while requiring that on the applicant. The applicant is proposing to plant trees along the outer boundary of the park that will obtain six feet in height within two years. This should be sufficient to meet the screening requirements without exceeding what is required by single-family developments." The requirement for a detailed landscape plan and a planting of street trees for front yards for each space is again above the requirement for a single-family development using private streets. The applicant is intending to develop such individual lots with landscaping that is requested by each space render at the time of installation of the manufacturer unit. Further, the requirements for additional trees to screen the line-of-sight for properties to the south and east is not supported by any other single-family residential development and cannot be imposed. Chapter 9.5, Land Use. Residential Land Policy 8. Residential areas shall be protected from excessive through-traffic, conflicting land uses, and other encroachments that would impair a safe, quiet living environment. Under this, staff states that manufactured parks are a controversial type of housing. They have traditionally suffered from negative stigma. Further, negative impacts are very difficult to predict. Compatibility between established single-family homes and manufactured home parks is highly subjective. Often, this is established on a case-by-case basis. This project is no different. Ultimately, the role of the planning commission is to act to the body of community representatives and apply discretion of subjective areas of policy and code, such as compatibility. This project will not ultimately result in an unsafe community. The increased density could result in more noise than a traditional platted 10,000-square-foot community base simply on the fact that there are more people per square foot. The question of the proposed project being possibly conflicting land use will be up to the planning commission. In our response, this whole area discussion by staff is inappropriate. There are standards imposed by the ordinance and the state code to address specific design and proposed development. The neighboring subdivisions to the south and west are elevated above the area proposed for development, and by that element will be buffered from the development. The park will have a single access point to the public street and will not affect the surrounding developments. Also, the park is limited to those persons above 55 years of age and should not employ additional noise or confusion to surrounding neighbors. By the nature of a senior development, there will possibly be two residents in each unit with no younger people residing in the park. This will limit the amount of noise generated by traffic on a day-to-day living and should not employ a greater noise impact to neighboring properties. The subject property is an ideal location for this type of development, but get it screened from the east by a stream and wetland, from the south by the change in elevation and the rear of residential development, from the west by, again, a change in elevation and the rear of residential development, and by the north by an arterial street. With these buffers, the proposed manufactured park should be compatible with all surrounding uses. And now, in response to the proposed conditional, conditions of approval, the applicant agrees to Conditions 1 through 4, 8 through 10, and 14. Conditions 5 through 7 have been addressed by the applicant's response and should be amended to comply with that discussion, and those about street standards primarily. Conditions 11, 12, and 13 were also addressed by the applicant's response and should be amended to meet the state standards, as well as the city addressing stormwater drainage onto the subject property from adjacent residential developments that do not currently comply with the approvals given for those subdivisions. There are questions on Condition 9, on trash collection plan. Because the applicant is proposing individual trash bins on each lot, it will not have a dumpster or a collection site. Condition 10 requires a detailed irrigation plan. The applicant is not proposing an irrigation plan, and one is not required for single-family residential developments, and to impose this type of plan would be in conflict with the state code. Based on the above discussion, the proposed senior manufactured park will be an excellent use of the property. I currently live in a senior park and found that it is an excellent alternative for seniors rather than renting an apartment. It gives independence, allows them to have individual homes without sharing a common wall, and having an ability to have a yard area to develop to their own taste in landscaping. The proposed development will provide an alternative residential use in a largely missing in Millersburg and is an excellent alternative to multifamily development, which could also be located on the subject property. From my perspective, this type of development meets the city requirements for providing alternative housing in a way that will be buffered and should be positive element to housing in Millersburg.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Mike Reader. I'm the attorney representing the applicant in this case, and I appreciate the thorough staff report and the hard work that Mr. Strait put into this, this, it looks like perhaps controversial, application. He did a good job of thoroughly going through the application and identifying what he believes to be the applicable criteria for approval. I'd like to try and not bore you with the legal portion of this. There's a couple of things that I find difficult in my practice as a land use attorney, and it's something that I try and teach my students at the law school, which is the city has a code. There is a land use code that's been adopted. It's been acknowledged by the state. But in addition to that code, that local code, are state statutes that often will preempt local code. So in other words, sometimes you are asked as a planning commissioner in your quasi-judicial responsibility to actually ignore portions of your code, and that, that statement often will give the decision-makers pause. And, you know, I'll see the lights go off, or sometimes it'll go on, people will scratch their heads and say, what are you talking about? In this particular case, there are, the regulatory scheme is such that there are two statutes that pertain to this application. The first one has been discussed in quite a bit of detail, and that is the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling Park and Specialty Code, which is a building code. It's a specialty code. It's a code that was developed by experts in the manufactured dwelling industry and adopted by the state through legislation. There are actually state statutes, and there's a state administrative rule that requires local governments to apply Chapter 10 to this code directly. And what it does is it, it provides a narrow band of discretion, very narrow band of discretion for local governments to review and analyze these applications. Okay? And I'll get back to that. The other statute that is applicable in this case is called the Needed Housing Statute, and that's found, and I've provided that to you in my written material, and that Needed Housing Statute is found at ORS 197, 303, and 307. Essentially, what the Needed Housing Statute does is it directs local governments to apply only clear and objective criteria for needed housing. Okay? The question is, what is needed housing? The Needed Housing Statute provides that answer. That answer is, in this particular case, it's easy. It's specifically identified as manufactured dwelling parks. So we know that this application is a needed housing application, and we know that the only standards that can be applied are clear and objective standards. So if your code has standards that require a certain amount of discretion, or it's ambiguous, or is value-laden, those standards cannot be applied. Okay? There's another part of the Needed Housing Statute that says when there are procedures, criteria, standards, and conditions of approval that either individually or by themselves have the effect of causing unreasonable cost and delay, that those standards also cannot be applied. So what does this have to do with this application? Well, staff has suggested, has recommended approval based on some conditions of approval. The problem from the applicant's standpoint is, yes, we appreciate the thoroughness, and we appreciate the recommendation for approval, and we believe that you should approve. The conditions of approval, some of the conditions of approval are identified by norm, are such that it breaks the camel's back. Those conditions of approval essentially, if imposed, would actually deny what has been proposed. And so it's really, the recommended conditions of approval are really a denial cloaked as an approval. And no, no offense is intended to staff. That's just the way that, that's what is triggered. So for example, we have proposed, per the, the Chapter 10 Oregon Manufactured Dwelling Park and Specialty Code standards, that 100 feet from the public right-of-way on the north, for 100 feet, the, the internal circulation, the road, will be 30 feet. And then from there, it will be 20 feet plus the four foot of pedestrian circulation. Now, where does that come from? That comes from Chapter 10 itself. So those folks who developed Chapter 10, who know a thing or two about manufactured dwelling parks, understood that manufactured dwelling parks are parks, although they have some aspects of single-family residential subdivisions, are not single-family residential subdivisions. And it is inappropriate to require an applicant to have the accrochements of a single-family neighborhood. So for example, where it may be appropriate in a typical single-family residential area to have 50-foot right-of-way, it is not appropriate necessarily for that same right-of-way to be imposed in a manufactured dwelling park. What, what happens essentially is you, that, that road is too large for the park. It bleeds over into the park. So those standards were imposed intentionally and allow the applicant to choose whether or not to have that standard, and the city is not allowed to impose anything additionally. And I can provide you the code section that says that. That is found, and I provide it to you on Page 4 of my written material. I'll give you time to turn to that. So Chapter 10-1.1. The top half of that Page 4 says, "This code," meaning the specialty code, "establishes the minimum and maximum requirements for the design and construction of manufactured dwelling parks throughout the state of Oregon to provide uniformity and affordability and to keep construction costs predictable." Okay? That is the reason why a manufactured dwelling park doesn't have the same level of public infrastructure as a typical single-family residential neighborhood. Except where- Except where specifically permitted by this code, meaning the Chapter 10 of the specialty code, no jurisdiction may require a person to exceed the requirements of this code. Now, there are portions of Chapter 10 that provide a local government with some ability to provide some additional criteria, and those are listed at the bottom of page four. However, it's important to recognize that these are limited. If the standard is not enumerated in Section A, Sub-A, 1 through 14, then it cannot be applied. So for example, in the case of the right-of-way, the internal circulation, if you go to A Sub-10 on page five, I've underlined it, specifically it says, "The size and construction of the park's street curbs and sidewalks, where they connect to the public way, for the first 100 feet of length, or the first intersecting street within the park, whichever is less." So for those first 100 feet from the public right-of-way, the city has discretion to impose its public street standards. Okay? But after that, it does not have that discretion, and the reason is because the code says that. If you go to C in the middle of that page five, it says, "A municipality is not permitted to establish or require construction standards for manufactured dwelling parks or manufactured dwelling installations that are more or less restrictive than this code, except where specifically permitted in this code." So where the staff report goes wrong, and again, I attribute no ill will to staff, it's just, that's the way these things work, is that where it's not specific in the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling Park Specialty Code, then the standards in Chapter 10 control. And if you go to Table 10C of Chapter 10, it permits an applicant to choose the streets. So in this particular case, the applicant has decided to have a 20-foot street, so traffic going both ways rather than one way, no parking on either side, and a four-foot pedestrian way. Now, it's important to understand that that four-foot pedestrian way is not required by Chapter 10, so that's an up and extra. Now, you may say, "Well, what about the staff report and the fire marshal where they say that, hey, it's our experience that people will park on both sides of the street, and how are we going to enforce that?" Well, it's important to understand that Chapter 10 specifically addresses that in the parking standards. What Chapter 10 says is, for every unit in the park, there must be two off-street parking spaces, and for every unit, every eight units, there needs to be one basically guest parking spot, so an additional, in this particular case with four, I'm sorry, with 28 units, that's four additional parking spaces. So the folks who developed Chapter 10, who saw manufactured dwelling parks throughout the state and came up with Chapter 10, have already taken into account this issue of parking. Okay? And so there should be, there should be no parking on either side of the street. Now, I understand the public may say, "Well, it should be, sure is nice, but what about reality?" Okay? Well, it's very difficult in land use proceedings to say what could happen when you're talking about speculative behavior. So in this particular case, the fire marshal is speculating on the behavior of the residents and their guests in that park, and that is not allowed. It's not allowed under Chapter 10, and it's not allowed under the Needed Housing Statute. So the Needed Housing Statute is important because what, we have a housing affordability crisis here in Oregon, and so needed housing is very important. This is a needed housing application, and it's important that all criteria for approval, all conditions of approval be clear and objective, and not have the effect of discouraging needed housing through unreasonable costs and delay. And that leads me to my last point, which has to do with the landscaping standards addressed by Mr. Straight. Well, first of all, the first response to that is, the folks who developed the property to the west and to the south above my client's property, it's my understanding, at least from what I heard in today's testimony from staff, was that grade was raised in order to develop that property. That's not something that my client is required to address. That is a self-created situation, not created by my client. So the landscaping standards are only, what the code, what Chapter 10 says, is that when the local government wants to impose landscaping standards, it has to look to the uses in single-family, the single-family uses in the underlying zone. And if those, if the underlying zone allows, requires single-family subdivisions to have landscaping standards, those same landscaping standards can be applied to the manufactured dwelling park. It's my understanding that there are no standards for single-family residential subdivisions, the screening standards and the landscaping standards that have been identified by staff. And so those are kind of the two big issues that the applicant has, because again, those conditions of approval, if approved, would have to be appealed to the city council or to Luba, because it just makes the project infeasible. And that's not what the Needed Housing Statute wants, that's not what the drafters of Chapter 10 wanted. So I'm available to answer any questions that you might have, and then, of course, we would reserve the opportunity to respond to the comments that you'll hear tonight. Lastly, I want to thank you for your volunteer work. I know that being a planning commissioner is often a thankless task, nobody's paying you, and you're generally not given the things that you deserve.
I have one.
Wait, 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 wait. We're gonna have public testimony first. So if you gentlemen will have a seat, and we'll call you back for rebuttal.
Absolutely.
Would you bring a copy of those up on the list there for me, please? Thank you. Would Corbett Richards, please, come forward? Please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you very much. I wish I had as much time as Mr. Williman is attorney.
If you want to pull that mic in front of me, that's a lot easier, yeah. Thank you.
I'd be happy to. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, speak up, please. All right.
Excuse me, whose attorney are you?
No, I said, "I wish I had as much time as Mr. Williman is attorney."
Oh, okay.
But I'll try to stick to three minutes. Like I said, I'm not an attorney, but I did read the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Park Specialty Codes, and I'm gonna bring to you a few concerns I have that I think are grounds for objection to this proposal. Code 10-2.3, suitability of site. Manufactured dwelling parks and park expansions shall not be located on land that is unsuitable due to swampy terrain, lack of drainage, or proximity to the breeding places of rodents or vermin, or vermin, unless improvements have been made to the land to eliminate and control the hazards if such improvements are acceptable to the authority having jurisdiction. As you can see, the proposal area abuts to a FEMA designated wetland. There's no better textbook example of proximity to breeding places of rodents and vermin than this proposed manufactured home site. There's ample evidence of rat nesting, nutria, mice breeding in the proposed surrounding areas. Rodents cause public health risk due to viruses such as hantavirus, which is approximately in about 15 to 20 percent of mice in Oregon. There's no way to mitigate the vermin and rodent populations surrounding flood areas. 10-2.3, suitability of site. This speaks to the floodplains. On the proposed map, you can tell that FEMA floodplain extends through at least that lower southern border of the proposed manufactured homes. According to the code, it does appear to me that you have discretion here. 10-2.3E, the ground supporting the park streets, alleys, driveways, and common driveways shall have or be improved to have a minimum soil-bearing capacity of 2,000 pounds per square foot. G, fills over 12 inches in depth shall be placed in accordance with accepted engineering practice. A soil investigation report or satisfactory placement of fill acceptable to the authority having jurisdiction shall be submitted prior to final approval of the park. 3-2, 4.2, floodways. Floodways, as identified on NIFP maps, are generally along the waterway's edge and carry most of the floodwater. The water in a floodway is often deeper and faster than an adjacent floodplain. Homes in floodways are subject to greater damage and risk to the occupants than homes in floodplains. Therefore, new installations of manufactured dwellings and floodways are prohibited. To me, it looks like, right there on that map, that that lower southern border extends is a floodway zone that they're planning to mitigate. Local requirements, 3-2, 4.4, local requirements state that local floodplain manager may require manufactured dwellings to be located higher than the minimum requirements. 10-2.1, local planning department is given specific authority to establish a reasonable criteria to the following. Number five, the minimum setbacks and buffer zones around a stream, creek, or a river running through the park. The proposed property abuts to a recognized FEMA floodplain. It is not clear whether the proposed construction site presents a floodway concern to future inhabitants. Concerns of swampy, marshy terrain, soil-bearing capacity, and lack of drainage should be allowed to be independently evaluated through soil, hydrologic, and hydraulic analysis, and be allowed to be presented to the planning commission for review. We've been given 30 days to come talk and respond. I think it's reasonable, given the consequential nature of putting in a manufactured park, that we be allowed to have an independent review, analysis, and have legal representation. At the very least, I would have a letter for the commission that I would like to submit so that it can be for basis of objection to city council if this allows us to proceed. As a resident, I moved to Millersburg from a property that was next.
We've reached our three minutes. Would you, do you have something you wanted to give us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have a letter for myself, and then I have the FEMA floodplains that show floodplains right through that southern border where they plan to put manufactured homes.
Why don't you give that to staff? Let, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Here, give that to Matt, please. Thank you very much.
Sir, what was your name?
Corbett Richards.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Norman Beckwells, please come forward.
I'm sorry, you're down.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Hey, Mike Reader, that's your attorney? Okay. How about David Phelps, please, come forward? Now, reasonably, we're saying three minutes, we're trying to keep this as brief as possible, and still get your point across.
Okay, mine will be short. I am the landowner who owns the land the water would be flowing onto, and I've been there about a year, and it gets very wet down there, and I just want to ensure that no additional water is put into that property. So that is my big concern.
Thank you.
So that's all. Thank you.
Is it Terry Hill?
I'm Terry Hill. I live at 2595 Millersburg Drive, I'm literally right across the street from this, and just here roughly, what, a month ago, two months ago, you guys had another proposal by the Curtis family that you guys laid out a whole bunch of restrictions onto, as he was just trying to put an additional house on his property. You guys were trying to make the width of the roads and everything according to him to your city standards. I submit that we also address these same city standards to this development. Also, you guys already addressed the issue about how close the road is to the, coming out of that place, there's already enough traffic coming already onto Millersburg Drive, I don't know if you guys have been out there, there's a lot of traffic coming onto there with all the development coming on, also with all the developments happening down the road to the west of this property with more additional housing coming along. So, yeah, there might be not as much as happening at the moment, but there's, we all know that that field that's down to the west of there, west of Woods Road, there's a huge amount of housing coming in there. So, just more thought for you guys for that. Parking, addressed parking, they're wanting to have one car space per housing? Come on, people, be real. When's the last time you seen one car per household? There's two people living there, there's gonna be two houses, or two cars, there's gonna be people visiting, four additional parking, guest parkings? Be real, this is not reasonable. Requirement, parking on both sides of the street, I agree with the proposal from the city that was talking about having one side versus two side. Again, with the road that you guys were requiring the Curtis's to do was going to require the 32, or 36-foot road, and as their lawyer pointed out, that this here has no out throughput, neither does the Curtis's. It's a dead-end street clear to the back of Millersburg City. You guys were requiring 36 again, follow-through. Again, following up with the sidewalks, I just, you know, one of the things that you do see out of, that's happening a lot on Millersburg Drive, is huge amount of people are walking, 55 and older people, they're out there walking. Be real, have sidewalks so that people can walk safely. Don't give in to having no sidewalks or only one sidewalk per side. No enforcement on parking, they're saying that there's not gonna be no parking on the street? Again, excuse my use of being real, but we know that they're going to be parking on the street. We know that they're gonna be parking on the street, and there's no way to enforce it. So just make it available that people can park on the street. I just had one question on the Class A and what's Class B. Nobody said anything about what that was. The canopy trees, you know, you got those people coming next door. You know, they're talking about 55 and older, there's no way to enforce 55, so we know that there's going to be people in there that's not 55. So don't call it a 55 community when it's not going to be a 55 community. The other thing, you're talking about the 20-foot roads, what about, they're talking about garbage services coming in there. Now, you're gonna have people parking on the street? How is that guy gonna get in there and get those trucks around there for doing garbage services? It ain't gonna happen. The, he talked about the...
Let's keep it short, you have your three minutes.
Yep, my last thing here. So, he talked about the fire chief and speculating, I'm sorry, the fire chief is a professional, and I think his statements are not based upon speculations or feelings, they're based upon his professional facts of what he has seen over his life of being a fire chief, of being a fireman. So, saying that disregarding what the fireman, or the fire chief has to say, really? And I think based upon all the issues that's already been identified, I hope that the city will deny this.
Erin Brazel, Brett, whoops.
Brazel.
Brazel, I got it, okay. Please come forward.
Thank you. I have a letter that was given to you as well to follow along with. Erin Brazel, 6212 Mesa Court, Albany 97321. So, my letter is three pages long, and I will try to keep it to three minutes as best as I can, but you can follow along. So my concern for the proposed project along, is that it borders along Crook Creek, and that there is a riparian zone, and this is important because not only in the comprehensive plan does it talk about the importance of that environment zone, but the relation to it with the nutria rodents and what was already mentioned with the Oregon State Statute, the ORS 446.100, does state that you may not construct a manufactured home park near the breeding places of insects or rodents, and this property borders directly along a site that has that.
If you could try not to be too redundant, we've already...
Oh, yeah, I have to skip down. So the Miller, comprehensive plan also is conflicted in a variety of ways with imposing upon sensitive habitat and building dense, high-density developments along those sensitive habitats, and the Millersburg comprehensive plan goes into detail about that, not allowing the high-density developments such as a manufactured dwelling park. If the manufactured dwelling parks is approved, I would suggest and hope that the CCNRs and Inc. increasing the additional landscaping or screening would be required to create a more safe and quiet environment to the residences that surround it. That also can help reduce the noise that is a nuisance characteristic of a densely populated environment. Sorry, I'm perusing to make sure I don't repeat myself or someone else's testimony. The item that the lawyer mentioned about the land of the residences that border it being raised up, I don't know if that is fact or not, but I know since my property does border the property to the south, our soil is very clay-based, and I would be very surprised to find out that it was built up at all because of the density of that soil. So I would be surprised to find out if it was actually built up or if it was originally in that way. Which brings the attention of the screening that was mentioned in the staff report. With the Leland Cypruses, this being up to six foot within two years, that is something that is not going to screen at all from our property that sits up higher, and it does mention that needs to be from perpendicular line of sight, which would be up to that level. And so, our property is about eight feet difference, and if you put a six-foot tree there, that's not even going to do anything. And I don't believe that even the staff report saying that to put another tree in the back of those plots is going to help because those are even deciduous trees, which won't be a year-round screening either. And so I don't believe that that meets the criteria for the perimeter screening requirement. I do ask that possibly think about putting a stop sign as well at the private drive if it is approved, so that with the pedestrian traffic, I feel like that is something that would be important if, to help create a safety concern. The rest of it just talks, you can read it on your own, but I believe that this project does not meet the criteria of A, G, and B, and the ORS four-four-six-point-one-zero kind of supersedes it all, where the proximity of this property to Crooks Creek and the rodent and insect breeding ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Brian Stafford, Staffenson?
Could, um...
Please come forward.
In light of the request for no redundancy, I'd just like to yield my time to save the phone, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Hardner, Harder?
I don't really have a whole lot to say. This, I'm with Clayton Homes in Albany here, and a lot of people worry about the potential hazards or nuisance adverse effects. I just wanted to be able to answer any questions when it comes to the homes, how they're built, the way they're looking. These people are spending a hundred and seven thousand dollars minimum for these homes these days, so it's just not a trailer park like it used to be. So if anybody would like to come look at the homes or ask questions about that, I'll leave my card, you guys can reach out to me. You can tour the Palm Harbor factory or the Clayton factory, you can see how they're built, and get you pictures, whatever you guys need if that would help.
Thank you.
Question on that, are we allowed to conduct that off-site outside of the planning commission?
Well... It will depend on what happens with the record.
What did you pronounce this? Is it Dan?
Dan.
Muller, Muller, Dan?
That's okay. Are you...
Oh, okay, Don Muller, okay. And Jeremy? Magnuson? Mag...
So that's Jerome?
Jerome? Well, I, we had part of it.
Yeah, so that's close, it's a common, common thing. So Jerome Magnuson, four-six-one-two Terry Lane Northeast here in Millersburg. Family's been a longtime resident of the Lynn County area. We moved to the area because we liked the diversity of Millersburg, both the manufactured homes that were here, as well as the farmhouse, as well as the new housing, feel that diversity is important and includes affordability. This reminds me of several years ago when I was executive director of Albany Partnership for Community Housing, and we built Periwinkle Place, which was in Albany, went through the planning commission, got the support of numerous people, planning commission above, to essentially create a manufactured home park that would be affordable housing that was, could be a positive place for people to live. You know, I'm a little bit bothered about the concept that there needs to be screening, that, what is it, that these are, these are families that are living in homes? You're not talking about a junkyard or manufacturing, you're talking about people with backyards. So I don't understand the additional screening that you would apply when I have the same need for screening for the two-story house that looks down in my backyard. You know, we're people, we live. It was designed as a one-way narrow pathway. You know, people took advantage of this, it became their community, so we did put up no parking signs. That became enforced by the people themselves because they knew that they valued their environment. So, so the concept that people won't pay attention to no parking, yes, people will do it, but I believe I support this project because I believe it supports the values of Millersburg, it supports the values of Oregon, and I think it, as designed, it meets the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we go rebuttal now?
You can, should he ask to see if anybody else, if there's anybody else who needs to present?
Is there anyone else would like to speak at this time? Please come forward. Please come forward.
My name is Tom Isley, and I live off Sedona Road. We were probably the fifth or sixth house that was built as part of the subdivision, and in the last five years, two of those five years, we've had flooding, or we've had water within fifty feet at the back of our house, which I would guesstimate would put this area under four to five feet of water. So from my personal opinion, I don't see how it would conform to building a mobile home park there or anything. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Could you sign up on this?
Oh, sure.
And after he's done, ask if anybody else wants to speak. We'll just keep going until we finally... Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to speak? Please come forward.
Okay. My name is Beth Eddings, and I am, my husband and I are the ones that would like to build this fifty-five years and older manufactured home park. Fifty-five years and older, okay? There are, there are things that you have to do when an applicant comes in to, that wants to live into this home, there are different kind of things that we will do and that you have to do. You have to do a background check with these people, and we will have background checks, and we will have, we will, we will check for where they have lived the last ten years. I'm not sure about any of you, if you've had a loved one that has lived in a manufactured home park. I'm not sure if any of you have. I have. I've had my dad and I have my mother-in-law. My dad could have came and bought a beautiful home, a brand-new home, four-hundred-dollar home, in his seventies or in his sixties. He worked all his life, and he did not want to spend money on a home, a big home that he did not need. As people age, which we all do, some of us want to have like a two-bedroom home, who wants to take care of a four-bedroom home that you've lived in all your life? They want a smaller home to live in. These people in these manufactured home parks, I have been a part of it for like ten years, these people start caring for each other. These people are like sixty or seventy, and these are the last years of their life. They need a safe place to live. When I would go see my dad, he would say, "Beth, you cannot park right there, you have to park over here." And every time I went to see my dad, and that was pretty regular, and my mother-in-law, no one's parking in the streets, they know what the rules are, and the rules are in the CCNRs that we have developed. I have a passion for seniors, and a lot of you have seniors also.
I have three minutes to talk, and I have that off.
Okay, I'm done. I think you heard my heart.
Can you please sign?
Please sit down.
Okay, you heard my heart.
I heard your heart, thank you very much. Please...
Okay. What's my address? Sorry.
Just to point out, the time was running just in accordance with everybody else's.
Okay, that's fine, you know my heart. That's all that counts.
Please come forward.
Please try to limit to three minutes, please.
And if you can before, yes, before you start.
Hi, my name is Jessica Staffenson.
Speak up.
Hi, my name is Jessica Staffenson, and with the rebuttal that is coming up, I may want to request a continuance based on any new information the applicant brings up in the rebuttal, and that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else?
Chris Martin, six-two-one-one Mesa Court. Yeah, I own a landscaping outfit, and actually I know what you're talking about with CCNRs. They say they enforce them, they don't enforce them truly to the extent. I've seen them, because I sign contracts with tons of people. They sit, they get them there for people to see, and then they get washed away, so nobody pays attention to them a year down the road. And as for traffic, yeah, that's ridiculous. I mean, you're, you're going to put one sidewalk in there? I mean, there's tons of people that walk up and down those roads. It's absolutely ridiculous. I mean, even what she stated, I mean, fifty-five and older, there's, there's no way, who's truly going to enforce that? You going to call the sheriff? Who's truly going to enforce it? Are you guys going to enforce it? Probably not.
I'm done. Thank you. Okay, anyone else, please? Please sign your name and address, please. And then state your name, please.
My name is Nathaniel James Van Nicholson. I am actually one of the properties that border along this property. I am not, well, first of all, I should say I am opposed to the development, I am not against any mobile home or manufactured parks specifically, I am against the density and population that will be going behind our houses. I do ask that the council does take into effect the quality of life. Right now, I don't feel that with the current setup, it would be a very good quality of life for either resident, either the current ones or potential future ones. And that the screening is very important so that both people, or both parties, aren't imposed in any way. Twenty-eight houses going in there, that's, I don't know off the top of my head, but along Sedona Road, that's going to make that one of the most densely populated areas in the entire area. So, with how things are set up, I do ask, once again, you do enforce the, what was it, COA, condition of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great voice, by the way.
Anyone else? Sign your name and address, and then state your name, please.
Okay. My name's Nola Richards, I live six-two-one-eight Mesa Court. I'm a home health nurse, and I go to people's homes daily for work. I go to many manufactured home parks, visit lots of elderly. I oftentimes have to park on the street because all the parking spots are filled up, so maybe it's not the people that live there that are parking on the street, but anybody else that's coming to visit them will be. And also, I've been to many of these fifty-five and over manufactured home parks that have multiple people living in there that are under fifty-five, because there's only, it has to be proof that one person in the home is over fifty-five. So, a lot of times they'll have their adult children, their grandchildren, they're maxed-out people, multiple people in few bedrooms, so to just picture this as being a nice little elderly couple that obeys all the rules is, you can't guarantee that by any means. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? And we'll call the applicants back for rebuttal. Could you do something?
Mike Reader? Yes?
Explain for me what, what A and B housing types are, what, what's the description?
I should have answered before I heard, I shouldn't have answered before I heard the question. I don't know the difference between A and B. Do you, you happen to know? Okay, go ahead.
The A and B classes, A is a double-wide, ten years or newer, and the B is a single-wide, ten years or newer. That's what it is. And these are all going to be new manufactured homes, so they meet the criteria because they're ten years newer.
So you have no minimum footy size?
No. They're expected to be two-bedroom, two-bath, in case one elderly person ends up living there and you can have a caregiver live them. That's the design of the home, with the front porch as indicated in the picture over there. So, that's my answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will try and be brief. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the people who have testified. I know this can be an emotional topic for folks who live, especially the folks who live in the area who purchased property recently. It's a, it's a wonderful neighborhood. One thing I do want to point out, though, from the applicant's standpoint, even though the applicant is proposing that this be a fifty-five and older park, and you can, you can see the sincerity from my clients, from a legal perspective, it's irrelevant, as was identified by Mr. Straight. So, we believe that the application meets the criteria of regardless of who lives there. So, I believe his name is Mr., or maybe his first name is Jerome, Jerome, Mr. Magnuson. I agree with Mr. Magnuson that it is somewhat offensive to talk about these future residents as if there's something wrong with them and that they're, that their structures need to be screened. They are single-family dwellings. Now, they're not on individual lots, they're not individual subdivision lots, but that is the beauty, if you will, of manufactured dwelling parks, especially ones that are, that are more recent, say two thousand nineteen, is it provides a different type of dwelling. It's a hybrid, if you will, where someone can live in a single-family residence but not have to own the dirt, okay? So I want to respond, I want to respond to that screening issue, and as I stated before, the screening is not required per the Chapter Ten and per the needed housing statute. In terms of the, we heard a little bit about the floodway, the evidence that's in the record shows that no development will be in the floodway. Your testimony about rodents and the susceptibility of having that, that is a extremely high standard. If anybody's going to try and suggest that a manufactured dwelling park can't be located here for that, there needs to be evidence that that's a real problem. Now, I'm not suggesting that there aren't nutria there in the creek, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there aren't rodents, but if you notice... But if you notice, there's other residences in this area. Okay? People aren't fleeing their residences because of the nutria or other rodents or insects. I live in Eugene, and I've, along the Amazon Creek, you have to step over nutria all the time, but it's densely populated. People aren't leaving those areas. So that standard that's in the code, that's enforced by the state. If there is, if there is a slumlord, if you will, who wants to locate tin lizies in a floodplain with real problems, the state will enforce Chapter 10 and say, no, that's not an appropriate location for a manufactured dwelling park. That's not for this commission to determine. Regarding the fire chief, now, people basically tried to take a realistic approach to this and say, well, of course, people are going to be parking on both sides of the street. We see it all the time. Well, first of all, we don't have any evidence that that's the case. There's kind of testimony that that may happen. We don't know the size of those streets, we don't know the population of those manufactured dwelling parks, we just don't have any evidence. What we do know is that the state has provided a comprehensive statewide system in Chapter 10 and said that there are two parking spots required per residence, not one, as was testified, but two, and then there are extra parking spaces for every eight units, and those are provided. Now, in regards to the fire chief saying, you know, a lot of times, that's not enforced. If it was so self-evident, that expression would have been found in the first fire chief letter that was provided in the record in January. It was not. The bolded language that's in the May 12th, I'm sorry, the March 12th letter, that's new. Okay? So something happened, something different happened, either somebody talked to the fire marshal or something, but in any case, if it was so self-evident, I would posit to you that it would have been provided in the first letter. I don't think it's self-evident. I think you can have manufactured dwelling parks that have 20-foot width spaces where there is not a parking problem. I believe that that's a red herring imposed to try and sink this project, and it's not going to work because the Needed Housing Statute won't allow it, nor will Chapter 10. There was a request to have the record remain open. State law requires, as you probably know, seven days for that. We are, the applicant is, of course, not opposed to the open record period, staying open for at least seven days, and we would entertain the opportunity to have 14 days for the entire open record period to be held open, and then an opportunity for responsive testimony after that. So between seven and 14 days, the applicant is somewhat indifferent. And I'd be willing to entertain any questions that the planning commission might have.
Are you, this is a blunt question. Are you prepared to take this to Luba if rejected?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
All the engineer drawings here are for February. Did the fire marshal have these in January? Did he know the size of the streets and everything in January? Pointing that up.
Yeah.
I take issue with your drawing. Eight foot six is the legal with a fire truck. And so if you have a working garbage truck in there with an arm that's four foot out to operate the truck, and you have a fire truck coming through there, we're going to have an issue. So I take issue with your size.
Well, that's with the landscape truck and trailer parked in front of them to mow the lawns.
Okay.
Computer, grab a camera.
Okay, well, the response to that is that these standards come from the state. But aside from that, if you don't have garbage, if you can't get your garbage truck or your landscaping folks in there because people are parking on either one side of the street and it's not sufficient, or both sides of the street, that's going to be self-regulated. Hey, if I don't, I'm not getting garbage done.
It's not self-regulated, trust me. I've been doing this a long time.
Well, then I would request, then I would request, what have you been doing? What is your background?
Let's speak one at a time, please.
I mean, I'm asking a question.
I brought a garbage company for thirty years. I know that it's not self-regulated, and that's not common, and it's a process to get the problem fixed when you have somebody that parks in a private spot. So.
Again, Norm Bickel for the applicant. I mentioned earlier in my discussion that I live in a senior manufactured park in Salem, and we have approximately 200 units there. And there is no parking allowed on the streets. It is rare, if ever, you ever find anybody parked on those streets, because the residents self-regulate. They go to the manager, say there's somebody parking, and they are required to move. Now, I don't know if you have other experiences, but this is my experience, and I have lived in that park for four years. I've never seen it be a problem. Thank you.
Mentioned along with some, if I heard correctly, that the lots will be able to add parking themselves, additional parking.
The applicant is able to add some additional parking if that's required, there is enough room.
They have two spots, they can make more spots if they want.
Let me clarify. So every spot will have two.
Correct.
And the state code requires four additional, right? So two plus four additional. What we're saying is, we understand, we've heard the concerns about not enough parking, perhaps not enough parking. There is room on the site to make accommodation for perhaps another three parking spaces.
I heard you say that the lot owners do additional spaces themselves.
Yeah, and they will not be lot owners, there will be one lot owned by the applicant.
I got more.
Go ahead.
Are these going to be garages or carports?
Great question, carports. Yeah, where it says garage, that's a mistake, it should say carport. And you'll see behind you, that's what they will look like.
And based on what you said, the lots are going to be rented and not sold?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. There was a traffic study done, and I know that Woods Road was having some construction done on it. I'd like to know when the traffic study was done, and I'd like to know when the Woods Road construction was going on, and did those overlap? Was the traffic study done during the Woods Road construction?
I think perhaps that's something that we could address during the open record period. I don't know if we know. The actual response to that is that, as was identified by Mr. Straight, the traffic, the code required a traffic study, but the code doesn't explain what the traffic study is supposed to do.
Correct.
Ostensibly, you would think that if there was, quote, "a problem," that a traffic, a professional traffic engineer who puts a stamp on their study, if they saw a problem, that they would identify it, and that didn't happen. But I would posit that the requirement for a traffic study isn't, the traffic study wasn't required as part of the overall regulatory scheme.
Yes, it was.
The code requires it, but neither Chapter 10 nor the Needed Housing Statute require it. And the reason why the Needed Housing Statute doesn't allow you to require it is because there is no standards. You heard it from the planner, there's no standard for which to look at the traffic study, it's a perfunctory exercise. And the Needed Housing Statute doesn't allow for standardless requirements or requirements that are merely done for the sake of being done.
But you're not understanding my question. My question is, when was it done? And was it done when the Woods Road construction was going on? And if that's the case, then your traffic study is not valid information.
I think I understand your question, and not to be argumentative, but we'll provide that information for you. But that information is going to be information for informational purposes. I'm making the legal point and raising the issue, should it be appealed to the city council or Luba, that the traffic study is not required. And that's all I'm saying.
Any more questions for the applicant before I ask staff if they have any comments that we want to ask?
Chair, could I make one more comment to address one of the questions? This is the, this is the site plan that was provided to the fire marshal back in January, and this you'll find in the record, and it shows the 20-foot width. So to answer the question, I think the planning commissioner had.
We're going to hear from the fire department, so we'll get back to that. If there's no more questions, and if you gentlemen please have a seat, we'll refer back to staff.
One more to, just to clarify, I was making notes earlier. So you guys, the conditions of approval, you guys disagree with five, six, seven, 11, 12, 13.
I apologize, I don't have them off the top of my head.
No, I think.
They're addressed in my written statement.
You have written responses?
Again, thank you for your volunteer work and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to. Now, we're going to go to staff, see if they have any additions, and then.
Yes, just to add, our staff report mentioned that our city manager, Kevin, has expert testimony from, or expert time spent in a fire department, years and years, in both Albany and in California. I'd like to call him up and have him address the parking on one side of the street issue that we addressed.
I think that'd be good. Yes, please.
Kevin Kreitman, Millersburg City Manager. As Matt mentioned, 37 years' experience in the fire service, 30 spent with Albany, nine of which was as chief of Albany, and then seven years with Redding, California. So with regards to.
What's your position in Redding?
Fire chief. So when I left Albany, I was also fire chief.
So 16 years total as a fire chief?
16 years total as fire chief. I was in administration for 27 years. One of the challenges that comes in with a 20-foot width right-of-way, and one of the challenges with what they're showing there, if there is a vehicle parked, that 20-foot is designed for emergency operations. So if you have anything blocking it, you have a problem. You have, as very similar to garbage trucks, we have, mostly the equipment today have what they call ladder racks that come down, they have to be able to remove the ladders off the side of the vehicle with the ladder racks down. Our provider, Albany Fire Department, is using large diameter hose. The large diameter hose, when you're connecting into the engine, you're usually looking at a, an arc coming off of it, of about four feet out from, and it's usually on the opposite side of where the ladder rack is. So when you look at those things, plus you need to be able to have the area to pull hose and do your work. One of the challenges that we run into in all communities, ran into in Albany, and Redding did not allow skinny streets, is when you do have illegally parked vehicles, that does have an impact. In fact, we ran into a case in Albany on a skinny street that was 28-foot in width, where there was a instance where there was a, I don't remember if it was a holiday or what, gathering, had a call, and they weren't able to even get in with the medic unit due to two vehicles parked side by side on 28-foot street. They couldn't get through with the engine to the scene. So there are challenges where it comes in from an enforcement standpoint. So that was one of the things that the city's looking at with regards to no parking and the fact that on city streets, because we're running into this currently with a private street in the city that is a 32-foot constructed street that's private that we've had complaints on, that we're unable to enforce illegal parking on. So looking at that, looking at what's in the code, what's in 10C with regards to, I think there, you know, one of the questions I would ask the attorneys is, who makes that determination under 10C? Is it the applicant, or is it the provider of those services as far as coming in and being able to? I think that at a minimum, when you look at it, you need to have, take into consideration that access so you can gather emergency access. It's one thing for a garbage truck not to be able to get in and operate and pick up someone's garbage, but it's another thing when you have a fire in an area and you can't get in and operate. So that is the primary purpose for that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? The normal width of a fire truck?
The width of them usually are about eight feet, but as I mentioned, you have ladder racks that come down.
And that's what I, I want the measurements, please, of the ladder racks coming down.
I think the ladder rack's about three. We can get the dimensions from.
Is that three feet on each side?
On one side. Now, if an aerial, if the aerial is in there, and they can be used on single-family dwellings, if we have one or more vehicles, structures going, they may put an aerial up. In that case, you have outriggers on both sides coming off as well.
To how wide?
They're about four feet, I believe, on each side.
On each side?
On each side, yeah.
Okay. You can ask more questions.
Yes.
Go ahead and ask. Thank you very much. I have a question for staff. The conditions that we put on here to answer their attorney's question that we can't do it, we are legal in our right to do that, aren't we?
Well, that's probably a question better suited to Wally or Forrest, but it's my understanding, yes.
Can you direct them?
Yes. Yes, we've vetted the staff report and the conditions of approval, and it's the opinion of your legal staff that those, you have the legal right to impose those should you choose to do so.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff also, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
When the applicant talked about the needed housing, it's my understanding that we have already met that requirement, if there is a standard by which we need to have a certain number of different types of housing available.
Well, it's my understanding that the state doesn't require a specific number of affordable housing based on the size of the community. It's just a requirement that we have various types of housing units available. And it was our argument in the staff report that we still allow manufactured homes on other single-family lots, so that housing type is still available. We just.
So actually, if there are any further questions of staff, if not, then you can close the record and begin deliberation. I have one question also.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Matt, I know we've had a lot of problems with Cox Creek in the past, blocking, getting all blocked up and everything, if I'm correct. And you indicated that there will be floodplain issues, engineering and all that. Is that practical for the drainage to go into that area? Is there a way for that to happen, or it won't, whatever they?
The staff report didn't indicate that there were any flood issues with the applicant's site. We were, we were just explaining where the drainage needs to go eventually when they turn in a drainage plan. And we kind of outlined those three options that they could do, and either one of those will suffice when they bring that in, as long as it meets the calculation requirements.
So they can realistically not cause flooding in that area and everything?
They can design the drainage plan in one of several different ways that would address the site to make sure it drains properly, yes.
But there's realistic ways to do this.
We feel there is.
By party sky, I think.
Yeah, we feel that there are several different ways they could do that. And we don't normally, we normally don't ask for that at this level. We normally have them solve that after the fact with the drainage plan. And you've seen that on many of the projects we've brought them through Millersburg in the past.
Like I said, I knew we've had a lot of problems right there.
Do you want the whiteboard entered into evidence?
Yes, please. And we all.
Again, for the record, Mike Reader, we will provide, we have an eight-and-a-half-by-11 that will PDF as part of the open record period. So it will look, it will look exactly like that. Okay. So the whiteboard for the record is not a part of the record, but you will provide us with that same information in a different form. Correct. We don't want to take that to Luba. We had to. But.
I have a question. Where did you get the movement for the 9-foot for the fire truck and the six-foot for the car?
That would be my client, if you'd like to address that question to him, he'd be, or we could provide it in writing. I think you heard testimony from your city manager that I think eight or nine feet was customary for the fire truck.
Eight foot six.
I'm sorry?
It's actually eight foot six is the maximum legal width you can have on the road.
Okay.
Without a special permit.
Okay, yeah, and so we would.
They put mirrors.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm over time.
So I guess what I would say is that that's overly conservative, then. That's an overly conservative representation. I'd also like to point out that the testimony received by the city manager, we would like, we'll be able to respond to that, but just understand that there are skinny streets throughout the state of Oregon. In fact, that's the, may not be in Millersburg, it may not be in other communities, but it is in other communities where there are skinny streets and fire trucks. Fire marshals throughout the state sign off on those skinny streets. So, thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to the open record period, we have received a request. The suggestion from staff is that the application be held open until May 29th at 5:00 PM, and that would be open for anybody to turn in anything, letters, documents, pictures, photos, maps, whatever you want to do.
photos, maps, whatever you want to do. And then it will be open until May 6th at 5:00 p.m. for rebuttal evidence, so the new evidence that comes in during that first period of time, if you don't agree with that, then you can put in evidence to rebut what came in the first time, and that's by May 6th at 5:00 p.m.
Excuse me, did you say May 29th?
I think you meant April.
April, April 29th.
April 29th, May 6th.
And then May 6th, and then the final period will expire on May 13th at 5:00 p.m., and that last seven-day period is only for the applicant, and is only for legal argument, and there's not allowed any new evidence during that last seven-day period of time. The record then will close at 5:00 p.m. on May 21st, or excuse me, May 13th, and the council will reconvene on May 21st here at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of all the material and deliberation. The evidence can be turned in either by hand, by bringing it to the city council chambers, you can email it, info@millersburg.org.
Cityofmillersburg.org.
Cityofmillersburg.org, or you can mail it in, but it has to be received at city hall before 5:00 p.m. on those three dates. Again, the dates are April 29th for everybody, May 6th for rebuttal, May 13th for applicant argument, May 21st for deliberation by this panel.
And just to clarify, when he says April 29th, May 6th, and May 13th, that's 5:00 p.m. on those dates, and May 21st, 6:00 p.m. for the deliberation.
So have you got a motion made for?
No, we don't, but we just, we continue the hearing as directed by staff.
So do we have more questions? Can we ask more questions, or are we done tonight?
The hearing's still open.
It's still open, go ahead.
So, question about the garbage trucks. Is it not possible that we can put a condition of approval that there is a central garbage site that they pick up? Is that something that we can ask for?
As was stated previously, the conditions of approval should address any impacts that mitigate these criteria, and so if you feel they do that, it's possible to.
Okay, so irrigation plan, I heard that we didn't have to provide that. I thought that was for every single house, single in the city that you have to have an irrigation.
Yeah, our code requires landscape and irrigation plans for all single-family development.
Then the treatment pond, I am not clear on what that is for. When I look at the map, it looks like it's in the floodplain, so I'm really confused about what we would do with a treatment pond in the floodplain if it's going to flood.
I would refer that question to our city engineer, Janelle, because she could probably give us a lot better answer on that than I could. Sorry, Janelle.
Well, but there's a detention pond, and there's a treatment pond, there's two. Yeah.
That's why you do that.
Janelle Doof, city engineer. At this point, the applicant hasn't submitted their drainage plans, including their detention and potentially proposed treatment plan, so I can't answer what they intend to treat there. Millersburg doesn't currently have a stormwater treatment quality requirement, so detention is all that is required currently by our code, and they have shown a location for that on the site, and as Matt stated earlier, we don't usually get stormwater calculations at this stage, so we put a condition on that those will be submitted and reviewed and approved at a later date. So we would not issue a construction permit until those issues have been resolved. Being in a 100-year floodplain is not typically allowed for a detention basin unless, because it's going to contain water, and typically there are berms around it. That would all be part of the design, to see what they're proposing and if there are impacts to the 100-year floodplain. At this point, there just isn't enough information, and that's, that's a review that would happen later down the road. I believe, based on what I've seen, it is possible for them to design this in, and if they had to make changes to the layout in order to make it work, then that's something that's usually handled at the engineering review stage.
Okay, so that detention pond, if that's where you put it, it's going to have drainage then when it overflows. The only way that's going to go is it's going to drain to Crooks Creek, which is on someone else's property, right?
So I'm not an expert in Oregon drainage rule, but the attorneys in the room probably could speak to it better, but the Oregon drainage rule basically says, if water has flowed onto a property, the downstream property owner cannot refuse to accept that water in the future, and what was being discussed previously was the idea of concentrating that flow by putting it in a basin and then discharging it through a pipe may change the flow of water enough that it's not allowed under Oregon drainage rule, so maybe you'd have to do an energy dissipator and spread it back out to flow the way it previously flowed, so that there are not, so that you have not changed the drainage situation for the downstream property owner. So there are many ways of addressing this from an engineering standpoint, we're just not there yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have one question also on, you have for the buffers, you have substantial canopy, and I guess I'm really pushing back on that word, that's not subjective enough for me. You know, that could mean a whole lot of different things, and I agree with the gal about if it's a deciduous street, it's no screening at all, so I'd like to see us be a little more definitive on that. I don't know what it would be, but that's my feelings, I'm one out of nine, but.
Would you care to address that, Matt?
If that pleases the commission, we're more than happy to clarify that in the condition of approval.
Any more questions or anything? Okay, we're going to close this portion of the hearing.
We're actually going to continue.
Okay, we're going to continue.
If I might, the staff recommendation for a motion from the commission would be to hold the record open until May, April 29th at 5:00 p.m. for introduction of any evidence, and until May 6th at 5:00 p.m. for introduction of rebuttal evidence, until May 13th at 5:00 p.m. for legal argument only by the applicant, with May 21st at 6:00 p.m. meeting for this body to deliberate. That is your staff recommendation, yours.
So moved. I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now I can close the meeting?
No, you close the meeting.
Before you go, folks, thank you for your testimony, greatly appreciated.